Next, we have the approval of the March 13th minutes.
Motion for approval of March 13th minutes?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the March 13th, 2018 minutes as presented. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next, we have authorization to pay bills. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move we pay bills in the amount of $1,412,766.64.
Second. Been moved and seconded to pay bills in the amount of $1,412,766.64. Are there any questions on any of the bills? Tom?
The commenter, we got the pool involved in that amount, right? The pool makes one of those numbers big.
Yes.
And there's some engineering or something, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no other questions, please cast your ballots.
Got the wrong thing.
All voting yes, motion carried. Next, we're supposed to have someone here for public comment, but they aren't here. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to address the council? If not, moving right along to standing and special committees. First of all, Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
We didn't have a meeting this month, Your Honor, so I don't have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have finance and personnel, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, April 4th at 4:30 PM in the council chambers. Judy Radke, Finance Director, led a general discussion regarding the City of New London debt as it relates to future borrowing capacity. She explained that the current $3 million debt that we are incurring now is to reconstruct Division Street and make substantial improvements to the city aquatic center. Our current capital improvement plan calls for a debt issuance of $6 million in 2021 for the complete reconstruction of our downtown Main Streets. This debt severance is also going to be utilized for various roof repairs and possibly other road improvements. In order to keep our bond rating of A3, we need to keep at least $6.4 million in reserve. Given the above, it is projected that the city will not be able to incur any more general obligation debt until at least the year 2025 or even later. Considerable discussion filed the city expenditure, restraint funding, and other financing options available to fund a future library, including leasing or the use of redevelopment authority bonding. Randy Stadmiller then updated the group on the status of the planning effort for the downtown riverfront property. He intends to have a new mixed-use design available later this month and present it to the Library Commission at their April meeting, and then present the plan to the Economic Development Committee at their April 24th meeting. He will have three alternatives considered as part of the master plan. These alternatives are as follows: One, a standalone library; two, a library with a mixed-use with residential; and three, another different mixed-use concept. Randy and the SEH crew are working up the numbers in order to be able to advise the city on what is the best finance option for future development of the property. He anticipates that those figures will be ready for presentation at the April Economic Development Committee meeting. Randy expressed that it's very important that the numbers and the financing option make sense and works for all of us. Director of Public Works, Chad Hirth, reviewed options for the reorganization of the pool's management structure. A motion was made by O'Connell and seconded by Barrington to accept Chad's recommendation as presented. Motion carried 4-0. Motion was made by Fache and seconded by Barrington to recommend to council that the Director of Public Services be authorized to approve change orders for the Division Street reconstruction project up to a maximum amount of $25,000. Motion carried 4-0. The Finance Director and the City Administrators' reports were reviewed and discussed. The April Finance and Personnel Committee meeting will be held on May 2nd at 4:30 PM. The committee adjourned at 5:30 PM. Then, I move that we authorize the Director of Public Services to approve change orders for the Division Street reconstruction project, each up to a maximum of $25,000.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the Director of Public Services to approve change orders for the Division Street reconstruction project, each up to a maximum amount of $25,000. Is there any discussion on that item? If not, please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
And I move we approve the license list for the month of April as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the license list as presented. Is there any discussion on that item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have for finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Next, we move to Park and Recreation, Mr. Way.
Thank you, Your Honor. Parks and Recreation Committee met on April 4th at 5:29 PM with the agenda adopted as presented. There was no public comment. So first off, on the agenda was, consider accepting a donation of facility improvements at Pfeiffer Park from the New London Youth Baseball. New London Youth Baseball approached the city with the interest in building a new grilling hut and three scoring booths at Pfeiffer Park. The purpose for the improvements is to shade and shelter volunteers who work for the club during baseball games and tournaments. The representative, Walbrook, stated that he is interested in seeing some type of recognition for the financial sponsors for the projects. Chad stated that he will refer to current policy and work with the club on their recognition request. Motion was made and seconded to recommend to council to accept the donation of facility improvements at Pfeiffer Park. That motion carried, and that's on tonight's agenda. There was no Rec者的report. Under Chairman's report, it was stated that other communities have reported declines, sharp declines, in adult softball registrations. And Chad was asked if the city had seen similar declines. Chad agreed that he has seen similar declines in adult softball participation over the past 10-plus years, but noted that increases have been seen in single-day events like the 5 and 10K runs, mud runs, and other types of one-day fitness events. No committee report, and nothing to put on next month's agenda at this time. The committee adjourned at 5:49. Returning back to the agenda, I'd like to... Motion for acceptance of the New London Youth Baseball donation of the shelter for the volunteers at Pfeiffer Park.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the donation of facility improvements at Pfeiffer Park from New London Youth Baseball Association. Is there any discussion or comment on that item?
There is a picture available if somebody wants one.
Yes. Yes. Okay, any others? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we have Planning Commission, and Mr. Steinhorst is absent. So I guess... Planning Commission met on February 22nd. They approved the minutes. American Transmission Company was there, represented by David Hadvee. They went over the plans for the proposed physical security improvements for the Hinskey Road substation, which included the scope of work, timeline for the project, and reasons for the project. After review, it was moved and seconded. The Planning Commission approved the American Transmission Company project. That motion was carried. On other matters, Thompson reported on plans for five new homes in the East Ridge subdivision and six-to-eight unit apartment on East Pine Street. Chairman Steinhorst reported on a call he got for an interest in a future potential small home project. And that was all for the meeting of the Planning Commission. Next, we have Economic Development Committee, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Tom?
How high is that fence gonna be, you know? 24 feet?
24 feet.
24 feet. It's basically... Have you been down through a pond lately and seen the new addition to the prison?
No.
It'll look a lot like that.
Okay.
It's concrete segments dropped in.
Does that go all the way around it?
Yes.
All the way around?
And then there's a giant gate going in on it that's electrical, raises and lowers with... It kinda reminds me of the old castle gates with the spikes hanging down, you know? So you don't want to get caught underneath it. It's quite the project, huge project.
Quite high, too.
Yes, yes. Okay, Mr. Morak, Economic Development.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, March 27th at 4:30 PM in the City Council chambers. Randy Stadmiller's written report regarding the riverfront property was reviewed by the committee. In his report, Randy notes that upon his review and the opinion of several financial professionals, it was determined that the use of TIF funds for any investment in a public library is prohibited by state law. This means that the city cannot utilize TIF funding for a library, but may use it for construction of public utilities and streets within the TIF district. Randy noted that if a building were used as a library, which is tax-exempt, and another use that is taxable property, then the taxable property will be assessed in a TIF and pay property taxes based on the proportion of the building used for private purposes. This is the concept of a mixed-use building. Randy intends to include both options in his final master plan, where the building is a standalone public facility or a public-private mixed-use facility. His team will be updating the cost for each alternative. The presentation to the City Council will be scheduled as soon as the new design is prepared and the related cost estimates are arrived at. The Economic Development Committee expects to have Randy at the April meeting to provide further details. Bill Zeinert from the firm My Marketing Director was unable to attend the meeting. He submitted a draft of his contract to retain his firm's services for the balance of the year. This contract includes the work suggested at the last committee meeting. After discussion and review, motion was made by Steinhorst and seconded by Fache to recommend to the City Council the approval of the Bill Zeinert LLC contract for the provision of digital marketing for the balance of the year. And motion passed 10-0. The committee reviewed the business guide as published by the City of New London. A number of updates were approved for the document. These changes will be incorporated into a new document and made available to the public. The committee reviewed lists of upcoming classes at Fox Valley Tech College under the topic of financial literacy awareness. Chairman Morak and committee member Bill Bishop agreed to follow up on how the city may be able to take advantage of these courses to get our community more exposed to Fox Valley Tech students. The city had a billboard constructed on North Highway 45 just east of Crystal Falls in 1996. Administrator Hager had previously presented a memo outlining the history of the billboard and the options going forward. Last month, the committee asked Administrator Hager to acquire with an adjoining business to see if they have any interest in the billboard. The adjoining business did not have an interest in the billboard. Considerable discussion occurred regarding options available for the future of the billboard. Administrator Hager was asked to investigate the structural integrity of the billboard and report back to the committee. Committee member Kapitsky will discuss the billboard with a tourism commission to get their opinion. Motion was made by O'Connell and seconded by Shervky to not do anything with the billboard at this time pending further investigation. Motion passed 10-0. The committee reviewed Administrator Hager's report. The next committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 24th at 4:30 PM. Alison Watson, a community education educator with UW extension, will be invited to a future meeting to talk about the retention and attraction of young people to our community. For public comment, there was a discussion regarding the status of the proposed new library, and the meeting adjourned at 5:32 PM. Then I move that we approve the contract with Bill Zeinert LLC for the provision of digital marketing for the balance of the year.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract with Bill Zeinert for the provision of digital marketing for the balance of the year. Are there any comments, questions on that? Tom?
Is that about the same amount of money as last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Any other questions? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
That's all I have for economic development, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, you have the minutes of the Housing Authority, Library Museum, Police and Fire Commission, Utility Board, Cemetery Superintendent, and Building Inspector. Are there any comments or questions on those items? Okay, if not, we'll go along to reports of officers. First of all, just want to remind you, May 8th will be our reorganizational meeting. I would also like anybody who has any interest in changing their committee assignment to please let me know, just shoot me an email, and let me know if you, you know, for example, rather get off of Park Board and be put on Finance or whatever, something like that, so I can get working probably within the next week on committee assignments for the following year. Also, I was going to make a Utility Commission appointment tonight. The gentleman has called and asked that his name be withdrawn just because of time constraints between business and family, so we will be dealing with that again next month then. I'm also reappointing Doug Noel and Cindy Goller to the Planning Commission. And I have, well, not quite yet, I guess. I also want to just take a minute to recognize this is Mary Tate's last full meeting with council, and just thank you for your service. How many years has it been, Mary?
19.
19 years. We've enjoyed working with you. You've made an awful lot of contributions for the good of the city, and we wish you best of luck in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also want to recognize another person here tonight, Sue Tenney, who has been our city clerk for the last 32 years. This is her last city council meeting. She is done and retiring at the end of the day on Friday. And Sue, you've been the public face of this city for 32 years. You've done a heck of a job keeping us in line, making sure everything's done correctly and professionally, keeping all the records and everything like that. And just a huge thank you to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations on retirement.
I love you, Doug.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
In all the time that she was here, I have never heard a complaint about her.
No.
That's quite a compliment.
Yes.
Never.
Almost as good as the mayor, right?
That's not true.
That was you complaining, Tom.
No, but a fantastic job. Okay, the next thing, I know you've all been waiting for this all year. The Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, an Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, cleans the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of New London has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Therefore, I, as mayor, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 27th, 2018, is Arbor Day in the City of New London, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you. That's all I have tonight. Next, City Administrator, Mr. Hager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just have one item, and I'd like to remind everybody about the... There's some real critical issues coming up with the planning for the riverfront property, and the next couple meetings are going to be quite interesting, I'm sure. And if the public has any questions or concerns, they can give me a call, or by all means, attend the meetings of the Economic Development Committee, and that's going to be April 24th, and then May 29th will be the next two meetings. I expect there to be a lot of information to be available, and it should be quite interesting.
Okay, thank you. Next, City Attorney, Mr. Waters.
Well, Your Honor, each year I listen to the Arbor Day proclamation, and I chuckle a little about the wording of that proclamation, but in all truthfulness, it is extremely important to our ecosystem and the consumption of carbon dioxide, and so it is a very... It's very important to protect our trees, forests. There was an article today on my Google about palm oil and what the use of... That they are taking up forests, they're deforesting, denuding forests in around the world to produce this, to replace it with the production of palm oil. And it's kinda scary because, you know, we need these forests for our ecosystem and ecosystem. And so it is a very serious issue, and so I chuckle at some of the wording on our proclamation, but it is a very important issue for us, and very important that we do protect our forests and replenish our trees. Go off on a little tangent, but it was topical from what I read today, and it benefits us all to take those words to heart. So not necessarily a legal comment, but I have nothing else, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next, we have Utility Manager, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the Planning Commission, I reported there were five new houses. Today, we had safety school, and part of the safety school was fieldwork and underground installation, so we put the last three underground services in those three homes today. And then we have been working, trying to get ahead of the Division Street project with some electrical pole moves. We are on our last pole. Hopefully, we'll have that done by the end of week. We'll have that type of work done, and then we'll be ready to be part of the project after that going forward. The other big thing, two things that are happening coming up is hydrant flushing, which will be the week of April 23rd to the 26th. It was in the local paper already, and you should see it again next week. So we'll be doing it that week, and if you're in that district, and they're color-coded in the paper, so please try to not run your water if you don't have to for laundry that day and then the following day. But that will be coming up. It's our annual spring flushing. The other one that'll affect some citizens is the winter moratorium ends on April 15th, and the first cut for one of the sections will be on April 17th. Now, last year, the State of Wisconsin set two legislation, set some new rules where if you don't pay all winter, we don't have to offer deferred payment agreements. We gave them a year and talked to everybody all of last year. You may find a little bit harder lying when you come down if you haven't paid me since last September, that we might not be quite so friendly to work with, but we're going to try to enforce the rules as they are set forward. So that will be coming. There'll be some stress for some people coming forward. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we have Director of Public Services, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, our suburb program guide has been printed. We have it posted on our city's website if you're interested in getting a first look at it. We'll be distributing it to the schools on... Check out the schools in your Thursday folder next week. They should be in there. We'll also be distributing it to the library and the Chamber of Commerce and other outlets. So summer's upon us, and if you're interested in those programs, either look up online or, you know, watch in some of those venues to get your paper copy. Secondly, I know it's hard to believe that with the current weather, but it is time to start thinking about spring planting. We have two community gardens that are set up in the city through a department that individuals can rent a garden plot. One of those sites are at Trinity Lutheran Church on Beckett Road, and the other one's at United Methodist Church on Oshkosh Street. So if you're interested in renting a plot this year, please call or stop by the office, and we'll get it set up for you. You pretty much have until the end of April to get your plot set up, and it's first come, first served on which plot. And I know last year Trinity filled up pretty quick, so if you're interested in getting a plot, that location sooner than later would be better for you to come in and get your plot reserved. We're working on getting docks and the piers set out for the season. We've got the docks behind Taft Park and State Farm Insurance out. We're going to try to get those fishing piers on the Berninger River Walk as soon as possible. It's a little wet for the crane to get back in there yet, so hopefully it dries up, and I know the weather this week's not looking that great, but we do have the two floating docks in. We'll try to get those other piers in as soon as possible. We also have the brand-new dock that we're anticipating putting in sometime soon along the river wall. I've been trying to get a timeline from the manufacturer. They're going to be installing it the first time for us to kind of show us how to install it, and they're really busy this time of year because part of their job is putting out docks for commercial and government businesses. So I'm trying to get a timeline for them to, and hopefully keep us on the important side of their timelines to come out here and get that dock installed so that they can show us how to put that together. But it's going to be a really cool dock once that thing is put in. Recently, we've been spending some time on focusing on invasive plants in our parks. Our staff has teamed up in the past with a school district in prior years to remove invasive species. And now this week, we actually have WISCorps, which is a group out of lacrosse, in our park system for this week, removing invasives in Hatton Park. So if you see a bunch of younger adults pulling things out of the back of Hatton Park, they're supposed to be there. They're not just, you know, pulling randomly things. They're actually pulling out quite a few invasive species. And the pilot I've seen so far is pretty big, so it kind of shows you how much invasive plants we actually have in our park system. So I don't know how far they're going to get this year, but it's going to be interesting to see how much they get out of there, and we're kind of working on making a priority to keep our parks free of invasives. And then lastly, we are gearing up for Division Street yet. Mother Nature's pushed us back two different weeks now, so we're target... Our next target date is April 16th, next Monday. Once again, if anybody's interested in the updates, I urge you to go to the city's website, click on Departments, then Public Works, then click on the Projects tab, and that will bring you to a page for Division Street. All the updates I'm putting on that project are going to be on that page. If you're interested in getting email updates, there's a link on there. Click on Email Me, and then every time I post an update for the project, you'll get an email, so you don't have to check it every hour or every day. So next week, that project will begin. If you've got any questions on that, you can give us a call at the office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Next, we have our Chief of Police, Mr. Schleter.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had one anniversary, Tom Elders, 31 years, and also Tom is going to be retiring on May 4th. So if you see him around, thank him for his 31 years of service to the City of New London, and wish him good luck in his retirement. The other thing I want to touch on real quickly is just the Division Street construction. We are going to be placing no parking signs in that area. Make sure to obey them. We will be enforcing them and stuff so we can get the construction to work smoothly. But if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call at the police department, or you can give Chad a call here at City Hall. But also take a look at the website to see if... Well, the construction, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our Fire Chief, Mr. Wilfer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one thing tonight. With the spring coming and spring cleanup and summer cooking and campfires, I just want to make a reminder to everyone that there is a burning ordinance in the City of New London. So before you burn, please view the ordinance on the city website, or you can obtain a copy of the ordinance from the city clerk's office. That's all I have tonight. Thanks, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to come before council tonight?
Hey, one question. Somebody's asked me, will we... They have their choice of trees that are planted on Division Street?
The arborists that we hired put together a package of four tall trees and four large trees. We gave that package to all the residents now up and down the street. So the arborist is going to look at the... So the arborist is going to look at the street as a whole and plant to make the entire street attractive. Doesn't mean that a tree came out in a certain location, that a tree's going to go back in that exact location depending on utilities or private trees in that area. So the arborist is going to take the information that he's getting from the private residents that we're requesting and then create the plan based off of that information. So he's going to work with the homeowners the best they can, but we're not going to promise at this time that a tree's coming out, that a tree's going back in at that exact location.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions with that, they can call the office, and we can help them out.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Who's adjourned?
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We are adjourned.